Welcome, everyone. Do we want to fill some of those seats in? There's some seats in the front over here if somebody who's standing in the back wants to come and sit down, so please do.
And then Church, we're gonna call on you.
I'm gonna call to order the October 22 Board of Trustees meeting.
I move to approve the adoption of the agenda, including 7A and B in the consent items.
Okay, so, and let's just vote, not on the computer for this, because I'm not sure where Julie, oh, there's Julie. All right, so we have a motion.
We are in.
Okay.
If you log on, we're all in, and we can join the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda and approve the consent agenda items, and moving 7A and 7B to the consent agenda portion. We have a motion from Mr. Garrett and a second from Reverend Mack. Do we have any questions? Okay, all right, so.
We're voting on?
No, but, 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 voice vote, because people are still getting in. So Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes, and if anybody needs help getting in, we'll do that in just a second. But the reason most of you all are here tonight is to hear a presentation on Advanced Ed. Does anybody want to give an introduction, or?
Well, I'll just quickly welcome Dr. Mark Elgar, who's president and CEO of Advanced Ed, the international agency that accredits school districts, or not, around the world. They have a new, very rigorous, new process. Dr. Elgar chaired the visiting team that visited Charleston County schools about a month ago, and often, Advanced Ed tells the district or school their accreditation status before they leave the district. Under this new process, though, the recommendations have to go back and be reviewed by a panel of individuals, and Dr. Elgar himself has come back to talk with us about our first-ever attempt to be accredited, so we welcome Dr. Elgar, and are very anxious to hear what you have to tell us.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Polsway. Thank you, members of the Board of Trustees, and I look forward to sharing this report with you, as well as members of the staff and community here in Charleston County. I want to give you a little backdrop, and then I'll give you the summary of the findings for the report. We work with over 36,000 institutions in over 75 countries, serving over 25 million students. What's important there is every year, we're in over 5,000 schools and over 100,000 classrooms. So we bring to this a great amount of expertise and experience, and virtually any setting in the world, we have experienced the types of schooling that you have here in Charleston County. It is an international protocol, so when we accredit a school, whether they're in Charleston, South Carolina, Tempe, Arizona, Cairo, Egypt, Rio de Janeiro, they have to meet the same set of standards. It's a quality school and a quality learning environment, doesn't have geographic limitations or geographic boundaries. Focus is in three primary areas. We'll focus on, you know, the leadership capacity of the system and schools, the learning capacity, what's happening in the classroom, and then how the system and community allocate and use their resources to support the success of the learner and effective teaching in the classroom. So it's really used as a leverage to engage, to identify educational quality, but mostly importantly, to engage in continuous improvement. What's most important is you hear the report findings today, it's about where you're headed as a school system, not where you've been. We use your history and your performance and the results you've achieved as a context and a foundation, but this report is pushing you towards a future which is dedicated to continuous improvement. So the role of the engagement team, at first, we gathered evidence and information. We poured through hundreds of documents. We poured through assessment results, student learning results, over the last several years. We interviewed over 500 stakeholders over a three-day period. We visited approximately, I don't have the exact number, but we've, we've visited, was it, approximately 200 classrooms in the three days. We interviewed principals, superintendent, central office, parents, students, members of the board, over those three days. The process itself, though, is much longer. In fact, this process with Charleston County, I've been involved with it for nearly two years. So although we're on-site for three and a half years, three and a half days, we're engaged with the district over a period of a couple of years, and the process continues today, as I'm sharing the findings. We assess the quality of your learning environments by being physically in the classroom with a research-based tool, to examine how the learner engages that environment and how the teacher supports the learner in that environment. And we provide valuable feedback, and that's the point of today, and you'll have a written report of these findings after today. So let me share with you the findings. The Charleston County School District has a rich history, a compelling heritage, and potential for a prosperous future. The school district is at a crossroads today, with a stark choice between preserving its past and creating a new Charleston County School District for today and tomorrow's children. If the district and its communities focus on the needs of today and tomorrow's learner, the choice is clear. However, if the district and its communities focus on preserving customs and practices of the past, every learner, no matter how gifted, will be ill-equipped for their future. There is ample evidence in small pockets throughout the system that the district has the knowledge, capability, and capacity to successfully achieve their well-stated goals in support of their mission to serve all children. However, there's little evidence that such efforts are pervasive throughout the schools and their classrooms. The disparities in learning environments and educational opportunities for students throughout the district is significant, and will require sustained, effective leadership and community fortitude to overcome. The historical conditions throughout the community stand in the way of meeting the needs of every child, as such customs and practices were not intended to support every child, rather to protect the independence of small community, communities that exist in parts of the county. The school district would benefit greatly from the removal of the constituent board structure established by Act 340, adopted in 1968. Today, the provisions required by Act 340 create an unnecessary level of governance that is a barrier to the district's effort to be, to create an aligned system of operations that optimizes available resources in support of every learner, no matter what part of the county they reside, or what school they attend. As the district continues its journey to serve and support every learner, to ensure readiness for their future, there are critical attributes that must be preserved and leveraged. The district's recent efforts to engage the community in the development and determination of a strategic plan lays the groundwork for guiding, monitoring, and achieving the vision. In order for the district to succeed, it must ensure capable and effective leadership at all levels that is stable and sustaining. The district has experienced significant leadership changes at all levels over the past three years. It is now time for the district to stabilize, so that efforts of improvement can be consistent, sustaining, and coordinated. The board and superintendent must establish clear expectations and unwavering commitment to the strategic plan, so that as change occurs, the focus on the mission and goals of the district remain unaltered. It is evident that the district benefits today from strong visionary leadership of the superintendent and in other leadership roles at the district and school levels. Throughout the district, there's ample evidence of deeply committed teachers who have the skills and knowledge to help every child learn. The district committing to supporting teachers through coaching, professional development, and establishing competitive compensation schedule. Although teachers have the expertise to be effective in ensuring success for every learner, they need the direction, support, and resources from the district to guide the instructional changes necessary to achieve the goals and expectations set by the district. With the strategic plan serving as a blueprint, the district must align and allocate resources to ensure that every learner has the opportunity and support to succeed. Teachers must engage in professional development to enable and support their efforts to create and sustain learning environments that leverage needed instructional resources to engage every learner and support their success. School principals enjoy a level of autonomy with respect to professional development of teachers. However, such autonomy must be balanced and monitored to build capacity and capability across the district. For example, some classrooms embrace and integrate available technologies in supportive learning, whereas other classrooms provide scant evidence of any use of available technologies. Additionally, some teachers are clearly focused on creating environments where the learner is the active participant. However, there are a significant number of classrooms that maintain a traditional, direct instructional approach that favors the high-achieving student and ignores the struggles of individual students. The district has access to necessary resources to implement required actions to meet the goals in its strategic plan. However, it's critical the district is able to preserve and grow available resources in subsequent years to ensure success of its vision. The district must continue its efforts to ensure that every learned teacher are supported by the physical environments, as well as the instructional resources, including technology that are needed for success. There are pockets in the district where students and teachers enjoy the benefit of needed resources to succeed, whereas in other parts of the district, students and teachers struggle to access and benefit from needed resources. The district is committed to ensuring equity that target resources, support, and attention where need is greatest. Meeting this commitment will require hard choices. It's critical the district ensure equity, not community by community, or school by school, but at the student level. Equity does not mean equal. Equity for every student means that he or she has the opportunities, resources, and support to succeed. The district must move from an environment where one must advocate for equity to one that allocates for equity. In support of the results of the standard diagnostic, which guides the evaluation, the following areas must be addressed in support of achieving the goals and expectations in the district's strategic plan. First, relative to board governance. The board needs to commit and engage in whole-board training regarding the role of governance in leading and supporting effective educational systems. Such training should focus on the work of the board as a team, providing critical leadership for the school district. Although board members may understand their individual role and responsibilities in service, there's ample evidence that the board as a whole struggles to provide effective leadership in guiding and governing the district. The team makes that recommendation, with understanding, we, we watched many of your board meetings, we've engaged all of you in conversation, you've made a significant commitment in serving this community. It's not an easy job. Having an understanding of what you do individually is one aspect of the job, but you govern together. You cannot govern independent of one another, and it is, it is a best practice in highly functioning districts where boards engage in whole-board training to understand that you're leading, you're among the largest, if not the largest employer in the entire county, and you're leading a significant aspect of this community's resources to engage in the practice of teaching and learning to help students succeed. So we say that with all due respect and admiration for the service you've engaged in, but believe that you must push yourselves further with training. The culture of the classroom. The district needs to define, invest, and ensure the culture of every classroom is aligned with the goals and expectations of the district's strategic plan. There is little evidence that a significant number of classrooms throughout the district support a culture of learning and engagement that the district's vision for every learner and their commitment that students are the heart of your work. Far too many classrooms have disengaged students. Teachers lack an understanding and support for establishing and nurturing a classroom culture that will engage every learner. The district needs to investigate, determine, and commit the necessary resources for professional development, coaching, and mentoring of teachers to create and nurture healthy environments of learning. Third area, alignment. The district's experiencing a significant change in a relatively condensed period of time. Although the change being sought is appropriate and necessary, such efforts strain the alignment of the district and its actions, both horizontally, which is across grade levels, and vertically from pre-K through 12. There's little evidence that there is a known, well-articulated curriculum that is aligned vertically and horizontally. While teachers and administrators are focused on data related to student learning, there's insufficient evidence that the assessment practices of the district are aligned with the instructional practices and curricula. Additionally, the district needs to ensure alignment between among major functions that guide the work of the district, from board governance, to superintendent's evaluation expectations, to the goals of the school system, to the taught curriculum, to the programs that support student learning, that support learning, to the evaluation and progress monitoring of program effectiveness and student learning, to the allocation of resources, to professional development and recruitment of teachers and principals. It is critical that the district conduct the necessary analysis and actions to ensure alignment of the work of the district, particularly in support and success of the learner. Fourth area, allocation of resources. The district's current practices in allocating resources do not fully align and support the direction of the strategic plan and the expectations stated within. Prior to the development of the next fiscal budget, the district should examine its policies, procedures, and practices that guide the development and determination of the annual budget. In order for the district to support and enable its definition and commitment to equity, the allocation of resources determined through the budgeting process must be modified. There is significant evidence the allocation of resources is disproportionate to the needs of students. There's clear disparity in student achievement levels between schools that correlates with the availability and allocation of resources. In order for the district to meet the needs of students, the budgeting process must discontinue past practices. The budget process must begin with determining the needs of students and the goals of the strategic plan. This requires the will and courage to redirect resources from areas that have little or no need to those areas that have valid and noted need. Last area, community engagement. Setting new direction that will transform the work of the school district and the commitment and support of a community requires extraordinary vision, courage, and perseverance. The district enabled and supported a comprehensive process that included high levels of community engagement in creating the current strategic plan. As the district begins the implementation of actions in support of the plan, the effort to engage the various communities that is served by the district is critical. Although the district provided avenues for stakeholder involvement and feedback in the development of the plan, there's little evidence that key stakeholder groups have taken ownership of the plan. There's little evidence that communities served by the district and key stakeholders in these schools understand how current and future actions are in support of the plan and its expectations. The district needs to design and act strategy that will focus on building, and, and, on building understanding and commitment to the plan. In doing so, it's important that stakeholders understand the why behind the plan and the evidence that compels the expectations and goals in the plan. To conclude, the Charleston County School District is in motion. It's moving towards a compelling future that will, when realized, dramatically improve the readiness and preparedness of every learner to pursue their future, whether for the next level of learning or to seek gainful employment. Creating and sustaining a highly effective school system is a key attribute of a vibrant community where economic prosperity and quality of life are enabled through education. Charleston County School District has defined the appropriate plan to create the conditions for every learner to succeed. District leaders in the community must sustain their commitment, remain focused on every learner, and have the courage and conviction to persevere regardless of the roadblocks or hurdles that must be overcome. Making and ensuring students are the heart of your work is a future worth pursuing and a journey worth taking. So let me share a couple data points behind these findings, and the rest of them are in the report. When we went into the classrooms, as you'll see, we looked across seven domains. One is equitable learning, high expectations, supportive learning, active learning, progress monitoring, well-managed learning, and digital learning. The district has fallen within acceptable ranges in most of these areas. What I provide here is what we calculated for the district, which is in the orange color, and in the green is the network average, and that's the network of 36,000 schools served by Advanced Ed. As you can see, there are areas where the district is slightly below: equitable learning, high expectations, active learning. However, in areas like well-managed classroom, and supportive learning, and digital learning, you're well within the norms that we experience across the entire network. The major findings, there are two standards related to board governance, and the emphasis there on whole-board training, that are, that are what we call priorities for improvement that you must address. There are two standards on allocation of resources, which relate to the ensuring and alignment of resources to needs of students. Those standards are 2.5 and 2.6, also required for improvement. And community engagement, which is standard 1.8. In the area of alignment, standard 2.12 is a standard that must be improved upon, and the culture of the classroom, that area is in standards 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. Your IQ score is 255.81. The network average is 282. Still falls within acceptable ranges. It does indicate, you're, you're a district on the move. You're emerging towards a level of meeting the expectations behind the standards, but you're not quite there yet. You're, but you're moving in the right direction. If you went to the previous slide, forgot to mention the summary of the standards. Five standards out of the 31 you meet, clearly meet, 18 emerging, which means you almost meet them, there's just little elements there, and we consider that within a range of acceptable in the way we calculate your accreditation status. The area of needs improvement, however, those eight standards must be improved in the next Having said that, we evaluate districts and their schools in the context in which they operate. We evaluate in the context of your vision, your mission, the direction you're headed that's guided by your strategic plan. We evaluate it based on what we've witnessed and observed in classrooms, and how students engage the learning each and every day. This district is moving in the right direction. That's the major message this afternoon, and, but it must sustain that effort. If we return in five years or less and no progress towards that future has been made, there'll be significant concerns. Accreditation and achieving it is one aspect of it. Maintaining and growing and improving throughout it is even a harder hurdle to cross, or to cross over. But I am proud to announce that the recommendation to our International Commission, which will be voted on in the next few weeks, will be that Charleston County School District should receive initial accreditation as a district. And superintendent has known me for quite some time. That's the first step in this process, in this journey. But I will tell you, in all the years of experience that I've been doing this, you do have the vision right. You do have the strategic plan that can guide you towards that, but you have some hard choices to make, folks. You really do. And as I often tell boards of education or boards of trustees, if your meetings are mostly spent on talking about the future, and what you must do for learners to be prepared for their future, you'll be a pretty effective board, and you'll more than likely make the right decisions, take the right actions, to ensure that that happens. But if you spend most of your time on adult matters in the present, you'll miss the real purpose of being here. And I would say that to principals, to teachers, to parents. It's not about us, folks. It's about every child that walks into a classroom in this county, and it's about their future. And I've been doing this work for a long time, and I saw a lot of great things in your district, things to build on. You need to take stock of those and preserve them and grow them. But you also have a lot of kids that you're not reaching. You need to double back, focus, do what's necessary. Don't leave any child disengaged in your classroom. Don't leave any child struggling to find their pathway through your schools. Find the pathway with them, because that's why we're all here. It's about them, it's not about us. So I congratulate you. You have our commitment to help you through this journey in any way that we can. You have our commitment to acknowledge your successes and encourage you to make the improvements you need to make. At this time, I'll open it up, if the chair so wishes, for any questions.
Yeah, please, the board members, do you all have any questions?
Madam Chair, can we have the school principals and staff that worked so hard on this stand up, so the board can know who actually was working on this?
Yeah, and actually, I was gonna ask, when we finish questions, I was gonna ask the principals all to come up and be in the picture. So do you want them to stand up now, or? Okay.
Because it's not just principals, I mean, there's some community stakeholders.
Principals and whoever worked on the Advanced Ed process, please stand up. Any questions? Reverend Collins?
Thank you for your presentation and the hard work you guys have done. I want to ask you, if you can elaborate a little more about, you mentioned that the first thing that you do is work on board governance, that that was, from my understanding, a major issue. And if, when you answered the question, can you tell me how, or what, or what the board is or isn't doing that's prohibiting gains in the classroom?
I can tell you that.
What is, what do you, what do you see as an issue with the board that's prohibiting the district from moving forward?
You don't want me to answer that?
When the kids fall in the classroom, what's the board not doing, or what it need to do, or, or you don't need a board at all? I mean, tell me what the issue is.
So we bring our observation on that and what we know effective boards do. One practice is the whole-board training, but because you set the direction for this district, and if the board is struggling among and between themselves on what that direction is, then that's going to trickle down throughout the district. If the board is not unified in their commitment to a vision for this system, then that's going to trickle down throughout the district and community. But if the community witnesses a board that's struggling to find a common pathway forward in governance, the community will struggle to really support that pathway, whatever it is. You don't want a community divided on how they support a school system, and the key component to unifying a community is how the board governs. You are the, you are the bridge between what happens in the classroom and what happens out there in the community. And what we see is effective board governance plays a critical role in helping a community understand and commit to the value that the educational system can bring to that community, because it's part about economic prosperity of the community if you have an excellent school system. It's also part about when you have employers throughout this district, who, and you have newer employers, they want to be able to employ citizens of this district, students of this district that leave it. You are that bridge, and if you're not unified, and, and you get through the, whatever the differences are, you have to come to agreement professionally, but as a group, once that agreement is made, you must commit to it with unwavering support. You may lose in the debate on certain things, because you're not going to always agree. That's not what this is about. But once you make that decision, move forward. And that's what we, we're seeing, we see boards struggle every day. It's not an easy job. So our recommendation is to help the very difficult job you have, make it a little bit easier, and try to help you do it more effectively.
So this is the last thing, then I'll move out of the way. So you recommend board training. Now, you said the right vision is in place in your presentation, right? So didn't the board agree on the vision for the district? Are we not unified on that?
I don't believe you are, sir.
You don't, you don't think we're unified on the board's vision for the district?
I don't believe, the, the team's view of this is there is not, you... actually budget based on a formula per student. And what they do is, they look at every student and they look at all the factors, the demographics, socioeconomic, they look at achievement levels or learning needs, and they put a factor to each one of those. And so it might turn out that, your factor might be 3.9, yours 4.1, yours might be 2.6, yours might be 7.8, and there's a number that gets multiplied. So the number of dollars behind every student is differentiated. It's based on their need. It's not, we're going to give every elementary school $6,000 per kid regardless of what kids attend that elementary school. So there's a growing number of examples, and what we're encouraging, and we're going to tell you that's the formula, but to look at districts who have taken on a more innovative, modern way of how they determine the allocation of funds to meet the needs of students. There are a lot of districts out there that have a similar demographic footprint to Charleston with wide-ranging needs, with students that are high-achieving to low-achieving, and they've come up with some innovative ways to address the budgeting process, to define in practice equity, which is not every student gets the same, but every student gets what they need, what they need.
So, in other words, say for example, in a particular school, I need to go back and answer another question, but in a particular school, if that school needs more resources for a teacher-coach, or particular staffing, teacher aide, then that school would get what it actually needs to help implement its program, correct?
Yes. The board, the team believes that the distribution of resources should be based on need, not a fixed formula, school by school. So what the needs in that school are, which means you will have school A receiving more funding or different funding than school B, if you're able to find an objective way to determine need in each one of the schools.
So then, you just mentioned a second ago about schools of similarity. What district have you ran across that is similar to Charleston County in academic structure or needs?
A lot. Let me begin with...
I mean, just give me a couple. I'm just curious.
Okay, all right. You can look at Broward County, Florida. You can look at Boston, Massachusetts. I can look at Indianapolis public schools in Indianapolis, Indiana. I can look at Jefferson County in Kentucky. And I can keep going. I mean, there are a myriad of school districts that have similar demographics. Now, I'll be blunt. No district has what you have challenging you with the constituent board structure and the manner in which this district's attendance lines are drawn. That normally is the purview of the Board of Trustees, the governing body, which allows districts like Jefferson County to draw attendance lines which have a much more favorable mix. They don't concentrate along the lines that you do. And when I, we saw the achievement, and I know you've seen it too, I mean, it is, that is remarkable. There is no other district with that clearly distinct line in the sand between high-performing and low-performing schools.
I'm done. I heard you, and I commend what a lot that you're saying. You stepped on one just now in the end, that constituent board, which I won't touch.
It's not yours, the problem is, you don't have control over it, and that's why it's not a priority. That's for the community and the state to decide, and it would be remiss if we did not state our professional opinion.
Yeah.
We understand, and we did not put it on this board to change, because you don't have authority over it. However, it is having an impact on your ability to govern.
Well, let me ask you this question, then. You mentioned attendance lines. So until this gets fixed, how do we work along with them to get their trust and respect that we can get the attendance lines to be where it benefits the community? That's the working point, I would think, that needs to be addressed, wouldn't you?
Yes. And that's, without legislative action, that's your only pathway, is to get their buy-in to establish the attendance lines that benefit all students in this entire county. Now, that's a steep hill to climb. I recognize that fully. But without legislative action, that's the only pathway forward, because with no action, the past 50 years are going to be sustained, folks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other, Reverend Collins, and Mr. Miller?
So I do not have a question, but just a statement or comment, just to say thank you for, first of all, the initial accreditation, approval or recommendation, and also the major findings that was discovered through the process also kind will or have aligned with just the Clemson diversity study that transpires. So it just gives us a greater light and a greater sense of in-depth of some of the issues that we need to address. And I appreciate the findings with that, and also that those findings as far as classroom instruction, as far as teachers are concerned, and I just wanted to be clear that we do value and appreciate our teachers and administrators who work very hard every day, and we have some challenging issues on some things that we have to put in place. So I thank you for those findings that you find, because it gives us a greater light and greater insight as to the work that needs to be done to move forward, to stay in that level as we move forward with the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Of so much of what you said, really, I think echoes through, I think, the ears of everybody who's here. It's always interesting to get a fresh set of eyes to come in and take a look at what you're doing. Oftentimes, I think that can be really scary as well. It's almost like asking somebody to come into your house and evaluate what you're doing or what you're not doing. I mean, I've heard people say that they don't want outsiders coming in telling us how we're doing and what we're doing, or what we should do better. So for this process to take place, it took an additional set of eyes and lenses to come in and shed light on some things that we're doing obviously very well, and the resources that we have in our rich district with it being from, like you said, sharing a strategic plan that seemingly is on point, and like you mentioned, having leadership in the schools, whether it be at the principal level, the teacher level, they're doing some really remarkable things. But there were two things that you said that really kind of stood out to me, probably more so than anything, was the word "will" and the word "equity", two of which I think we don't have. No, two of which I know we do not possess, at least not in a wholehearted, everybody-on-board, all-hands-on-deck kind of way, which you said if we don't have, it'd be very difficult for us to move forward. And 50 years from now, we'll be in the same place. I know you did a lot of, I know you guys spent a lot of time here speaking to a lot of people, and so if you know somebody who has a magic pill, who could give us the will and not be afraid of the equity that will take place, like you mentioned, to really move the district and transcend the district in a way that will be beneficial for all, because you mentioned about the hard lines of achievement, every person in this building who's in a classroom or in a school on this board sees those lines. We live those lines. Unfortunately, I think we've been okay with those lines too, because if we weren't, they still wouldn't be here 50 years later. And so I'm hoping as we move forward, there's something you could do based on what you've seen across the country, that you could give advice to not just the nine of us, but the principals that are in the buildings where the classroom and the magic really takes place, but also the communities too, because I think you talked about, when Reverend Collins asked about what could we do as a board, and I think you're right, what we do permeates to what the community wants, per se. And then maybe that's also part of the problem too, right? I mean, maybe there are folks in the community that are exactly okay with what we're doing and how things are being done. And maybe that's the problem. And so, you know, the board governance and unity of the board, I think, as a board member, may be one of the most hardest things to hurdle of everything that you mentioned, because all nine of us are different. We all come from different backgrounds. We're all the sum of our experiences. But I do not believe all of us share in the same mission of every child being prepared when they leave us. I just don't. I hope that the teachers and principals in the building believe that, but the results don't show that. And so I'm hoping as we move forward, there's something you have in that jacket pocket or in your pants pocket or something, because I really do fear we need that. I think since Jerita's been here, she's been ushering and talking about, and having those kinds of conversations. And I'm sure they haven't been very pleasant conversations. I know they haven't been. We've had previous people leave our system because they wanted to have those kinds of uncomfortable conversations about equity and will and the opportunities for all, and closing not just the achievement gap, but the access gap as well. I'm hopeful, but also very leery. I want us, and our children need us, to succeed. This board hadn't been unified since I've been on it six years. Sometimes we are, and most times we're just not. I don't know how to work through that, or even hurl that, but you stay in touch, don't go too far, because we'll need you.
All right. So let me briefly respond, if I may. The granting of initial accreditation was done in part because we have witnessed and have enough evidence that you have enough ingredients to solve the very things that you have outlined. You have enough ingredients to gather the will to do the hard work. You have enough ingredients to become an effective board. I will give you this, you're passionate. We can build on that, and we can move it forward. In all seriousness, when we turn our attention to an individual child and their future, it changes how we approach one another. And we're not going anywhere, and I'm not going anywhere. I took on this commitment when I was asked to, I lead one of these a year, and very selective. I believe that you have the ingredients to move forward, and that's why you're being granted initial accreditation. If you stay where you're at today and don't move forward in the next five years, it will be a very short-lived accreditation. I'll be very clear. However, you have the ingredients. You have, in schools, we saw some incredible dedication, effective teaching, effective leadership. We've seen it and heard it from you individually as board members, but you need some work. And we're here to help you, or you can use, there's other experts who could help you. So I'll add one more word to your will and equity, because I think there's a really good, healthy dose of hope that you can grab onto and build for that future.
Ms. Jeffrey?
I have a little bit of a different background. I've worked in many classrooms in other parts of the country, and this is its own unique place. And I understand that. It has taken me two years to kind of figure out what's going on. I find the thing that would be, that is most beneficial to me as an educator and as a board member here, is that you said our strategic plan is a good one, and that I really, I mean, I thought it might be, but that, to me, helps establish a jumping off point, that we're going in the right direction. And I know a lot of the problems that we have, and I'm willing to, you know, I think we're all willing to address those problems. But just to know that we're headed on the right road in the right direction, for me personally, has been, that's been the most helpful piece of information. Thank you.
I just want to make a real quick, Reverend Collins, did you have another question?
If I can, what do you?
Okay. Oh, Mr. Cobb?
I was just going to say, I wholeheartedly disagree with Mr. Miller, although I agree with many things. I do think we have the hope, the will, the equity. I think it's going to be hard work, and I think we just, we got to jump off and do it. And either we can be the board that is okay and leaves things like they have been for the past 50 years, which I don't want to see that happen, or we can be the board that, you know, comes together on how we are ensuring equity across the district and supporting these fabulous principals and community members. And I hope that that's the board we are. So, Mr. Staub?
All right. Your group is the second group in probably 30 days, major education-based groups that have identified Charleston's unique system of a constituent school board as being a major obstacle. Now, we currently have schools from anywhere close to 100 students in some parts of the district to over 4,000 in other parts. And I think that one of the equity issues is, it's a lot easier to provide a large number of programming and resources to kids when you have 4,000 kids versus when you only have a small number of kids. It sounds like you've done this across the world. Have you come across other school systems that have this type of unique, two-tiered system, and what is different about the ones that have worked versus what you see here?
So, yes, I have. I mean, if you go to Jefferson County and Louisville, Kentucky, because of, they each had local school councils, and through an act legislative in Kentucky, there was a layer of governance that were granted to those school councils. And so in Kentucky, there's these layers. The difference, though, where it makes it difficult is, they were given authority over things that reside from the principles of the programs within the school, not who goes to the school. The attendance lines were at this level. That is the unique proposition here, is where you don't have control over attendance lines, which you've already identified one of the limitations there. In a district, you'd rarely find, unless there was a geographic separation that prohibited, you would have a much more even distribution of student populations across elementary, middle, and high schools. And you'd build schools to that spec, and you'd maintain them. That is normally what governing boards have the authority to do, and the authority to find the resources to commit to those attendance lines. So that's the unique element here. There is shared governance in other systems, and even in Kentucky, and Mr. Hollings had, you were mentioning, that takes, like in Jefferson, still a relationship between the board and those local school councils. They have to come to agreement on the overall strategic plan, and they work hard at that. But it works. There's struggles there in Jefferson. It's a district with wide-ranging needs, high pockets of achievement and high pockets of underachievement. So it's that piece of it, that's probably why two groups, and you could probably bring in 200 groups, and they're going to come to the same conclusion, because a major part of your work, you don't have control over, which we normally find at this level.
See, I think that's my biggest takeaway on this, that you're, that is something that's been identified that is not within our hands to fix, and is something that our state is going to have to look at.
But, going back here, if you accept that as your reality, which basically has been done for the 50 years, what you have witnessed and what you have been able to achieve in this district will not change. It will not change. You won't, you don't, do you have the universal will to
you would have a much more even distribution of student populations across elementary, middle, and high schools. And you'd build schools to that spec and you'd maintain them. That is normally what governing boards have the authority to do and the authority to find the resources to commit to those attendance lines. So that's the unique element here. There is shared governance in other systems. And even in Kentucky and Mr. Hollingshead you were mentioning, that takes like in Jefferson, still a relationship between the board and those local school councils. They have to come to agreement on the overall strategic plan and they work hard at that. But it works. There's struggles there in Jefferson. It's a district with wide-ranging needs, high pockets of achievement and high pockets of underachievement. So it's that piece of it is probably why two groups, and you could probably bring in 200 groups, and they're gonna come to the same conclusion. Because a major part of your work, you don't have control over, which we normally find at this level.
See, I think that's my biggest takeaway on this, that you're, that is something that's been identified that is not within our hands to fix and is something that our state's gonna have to look at.
But, going back here, if you accept that as your reality, which basically has been done for the 50 years, what you have witnessed and what you have been able to achieve in this district will not change. It will not change. And you won't, you don't, do you have the universal will to commit to equity, to overcome the structures that are gonna limit your capabilities? And I think that's where people look at something and say, we can't do anything about it, so we live with it. Well, here's the problem. You live with it and you're gonna continue to prepare kids. And I said in the opening paragraph, no matter how gifted, your kids will be ill-equipped for their future. Even the high-achieving kid today will be compromised if this structure prevails over the next 50 years. It's antiquated. It needs to be fixed. You need to help, you know, through advocacy or whatever you can do to bring people to that awareness. And it's gonna take all of you together, committed, to getting the people who have the power to make the change. And if they won't, then you're gonna need to commit to some other arrangement to make sure you can get the constituent boards on the same page as all of you.
Correct. That system was set up 50 years ago and we all know what happened 50 years ago and why it was set up that way.
And we recognize that.
Yes.
But either you live with the past or you be bold and really commit to changing the future.
So I know, I know we have a couple more questions, but I know Dr. Elgar has to get out of here quickly, so.
I'm okay.
Okay, all right. Reverend Collins and then Dr., Mr. Hollingshead and then?
I'm a doctor.
And I'm sorry. But I'll give it to you today.
But, you named several districts apparently had the governance structure that you approve of or that meet your aim.
No, I didn't name, you asked in demographics. As far as governance, no, I would, if I were to give you districts who I believe have an effective governance structure, I'd give you a different list than I gave you.
You spoke about demographics, is right.
Yeah. Where they have similar demographics, where they have pockets of schools where are very high-achieving and schools that are very low-achieving. And they're struggling getting those things across the district.
So those districts aren't rated excellent then either?
No, I didn't say that.
So they're all rated excellent?
Okay. So let me give you another one. Let me go to what you're, Gwinnett County, Georgia. It's an urban school district north of Atlanta. It's more diverse than the city of Atlanta. It has more wide-ranging needs and has grown. It probably has one of the highest achieving boards in the country. They've had a five-member board and most of those members have been there a long time. They've had the same superintendent for 20-plus years. They've stayed to their vision. They've seen that district grow from being just basically African-American and Caucasian to about 30 different nationalities in the last 20 years. And yet they've improved student achievement in all demographics. And they have been recognized numerous times as a district of distinction. If you want a county school system that you should look at, you should look at them. If you want another one, Miami-Dade. Even though they have their struggles, Miami-Dade has made more gains and made more improvements in the last 10 years. And they too, I will tell you, 10 years ago, they had a board that couldn't agree on the day of the week. They couldn't. Today, with a very passionate, very gifted superintendent, that same board, virtually that same board are unified on virtually everything. They've come together, they got past their differences, and it's a district that has, and put aside Act 340, it's more complex than Charleston, far more complex. And they're improving, they're making gains, but it started in the boardroom with the superintendent. That's where it started. So Miami-Dade's a great district for you to look at, as a district that's overcome some historical struggles.
So let me, let me try to get them going, get out of the way. What I'm really asking is that, you're saying that if, when you speak of governance, you're speaking about a board that agrees, I assume, a board that works together, a board that's trained, or you're speaking of some other aspect? What are you really getting at?
I think a board that still engages in open and honest debate with one another, but they understand that as a group, they make decisions. And once that decision is made as a group, without exception, they commit to that decision. It doesn't mean you're gonna agree on everything, but once you make a decision, a collective decision, because as individuals, you have absolutely no governing authority.
We know that.
Your authority comes as a group. But we're not saying every decision should be 9-0. You're gonna have tough decisions that you're not all gonna agree on. The worst decision you can make are 5-4. Because that means you haven't pushed each other enough to get to the best decision, because you're still divided. And simple majority is not to me a good governing. There are a lot of boards today that put in their policies that they have to get a supermajority, that 5-4 vote on a board of nine wouldn't count. They actually have to get to seven or greater, which means they have to push each other to get to and resolve the differences. But once they vote, they commit to whatever that action is. There's no, we want to go back and revisit, or I'm gonna keep fighting the fight, even though I lost 7-2, I'm gonna keep fighting the fight. So we see practices where boards, they still are very passionate, they still debate in a healthy way. We're in a democracy. Engage, share, but commit to finding consensus to move forward in governance. And good boards do that. They don't do 9-0, but they push each other. And then once the decision is made, they push forward.
Just to sum up, what you're saying then is that you believe that the issue, the major issue is the lack of training on the consolidated board and governance and the role of the constituent board, its role in governance. And if it wasn't for these two things, Charleston County School District would be far better off, or could make higher gains, is what I'm perceiving, or another way of doing it by eliminating perhaps the constituent board or unifying the consolidated board. But what I don't really see, and I'm not saying I disagree 100%, I don't agree with some of what you say, but what I'm really getting at is that I don't see where the direct impact of the classroom is really being dealt with, how the board is really hindering the growth between a teacher and a student on a one-on-one basis, on your summary. I see the governance, you said the governance in a way, but for me, if I sign up, if I take a kid and sign that charter for baseball, hey, you're gonna play baseball, I'm not his father, and maybe you're the coach. So I lose several games, or we lose several games, and so I go to the umpire and say, hey, we can win if you don't call these errors against us, if you don't call our foul. So, you know, so I'm looking at, you're looking at the governance, but I want to look inside the classroom to see what we can do to fix that and not so much what's wrong with the governance, because we're not fighting the superintendent for teaching children. We're behind, we all are behind that. We want us, here all kids grow. But I don't see the direct correlation, how that's the governing authority of any body. Anything in the classroom is hurting, hurting children. And that's what I really want to see. What are we doing that's hurting children that we need to stop doing? Or what can we do to help children that we're not doing? That's what I really want to see.
So Reverend Collins, the board governance was one of five major findings. The other four, the culture of the classroom, alignment, which is, you know, curricula, the alignment between the taught curriculum and assess how teachers are addressing student needs. The other area was allocation of resources, which does relate to governance, because you set the budget, community engagement. So this is not all about governance. I think the conversation here turned to that because you're a board in this setting. But if we were having, if I was having this meeting with just principals and teachers, I guarantee you, we'd probably be spending most of our time on these two. Okay? So if, you're right. If the governance body became more effective today, would that solve all your problems? No.
No.
Solve a few though, for sure.
It would help, but I will say this. You know, there are five major areas, all need tending to, not just one.
All right. We need, quick.
I know, so I'm sorry.
Quick. I'm gonna take your doctor away.
I would love to, and I know maybe with superintendent later on, would love to visit or either have a dialogue with some district across the country that has similar needs or problems or goals that we have. I'm very curious and like to learn that. The other thing I would say to you is that, like in our own county, you said moving from the past to forward. I'm gonna say, one of the things I'm a big fan of is I understand the situation of the constituent board, I understand the pros and cons, I understand why it got here. Some tell the truth about it, some don't tell the truth about it. But the thing about it is, is here, I think as a board, we need to wrap or put our arms around them, provide them with the necessary training, to make them feel as a partner, to be able to move forward until such time the delegation or anybody makes changes. You know, you can't keep throwing rocks all the time and not be able to move forward. We have to kind of have that dialogue to bring that together. Even I know that one. But the other thing is, is like, schools like, say for example, St. James-Sante, where has a teaching team in place or a principal in place that has a team, we have to show that team that necessary love and support, that teacher that drives 50 miles a day, one way to get to that school. We have to find ways to have that person be built up for that long task of educating those kids. I'll give you one good example, and I'll tell you a secret in Charleston, nobody likes to put a flag on, but we have a school here, it's called Charleston Development Academy. And it's not a Charleston County school, but it's a school within our system. And Cecilia Cunningham, ladies started that school some over 15, 20 years ago, and she's taking kids out of the projects. And she's done wonderful things within that school that no one ever talks about and even marvels in Charleston County. Now, we need to take that for example, instead of looking at who brings the cash count to the draw. And we need to mimic what goes on there and place that kind of teamwork within schools like St. James-Sante or Shakora Elementary or wherever it may be, because that was a miracle and that's a great thing which is going on there. And that's something we do have within our district that we can kind of piggyback on.
Absolutely right. As I said in the report, there are pockets of really effective practices in this district. You have to take stock of them, preserve them, and grow them.
One thing I didn't ask earlier, but I know there's a lot of folks here from the community who helped in this process. Would you all please stand so we can thank you, everybody from the community who participated in this process? And then if I could ask Dr. Elgar and all of our principals and board members, if you all can come up front, somebody's gonna take a picture of the entire group. So if y'all principals, please come forward, board members, we're gonna get a picture. Two, three. All right, fantastic. Okay, we are going to, sorry, reconvene in open session, and if we can please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the minutes. Is this a motion to approve?
Both of them as written.
Okay. The...
Michael, you still second that for both of them?
That was Eric.
Oh, Eric.
Eric, so, all right, hold on guys. So Mr. Garrett made a motion to approve the minutes and there's a second. I'm not seeing where they are on here.
I don't see the minutes on here.
There they are. They're item D. So this is for September 24th and October 8th. So we have a motion and a second. Julie? It's not up yet, it'll be up in just a second.
On the drive, I saw a lot of paper copy.
All right, it's up, please vote.
Chris has minutes.
No, it's in November. Everybody vote, all right?
Can you call up what I announced the votes at?
Yeah, it was, they pop up on the screen.
Okay, guys. Wait, hold on. Everybody, wait, stop, please. All right. Somebody needs to help Mr. Staub, because it says he's...
I went to vote and disappeared on me.
All right, so the motion passed. All right, the next item is a consideration...
You didn't announce the votes.
I did. I said the motion passed. It's right up there.
You're not gonna say how each person voted?
Nope.
It's on the screen behind you.
It's on there for you.
I mean, why wouldn't you announce it, Mr. Staub?
Because it's right there in front of you, Reverend Collins, and it's right up there for everybody to see. See? Right up there, everybody can see it.
It's also behind you, Reverend Collins.
I mean, I don't...
Okay. Next to the consideration...
Just one more question. Can those people watching the internet or video or YouTube, will it be to actually hear the votes?
Yes.
Or see the vote?
Yes.
I mean, I will ask Erica and she'll find out for us and we'll find out and let you know.
Yeah, I think it was explained to us during training, it actually comes, pops up on their screen for them.
Okay.
My daughter will vote.
Well, I'm glad you do. So the next item on our agenda...
Okay, so the next items before us are some out-of-county requests. I'd like to make two separate motions. For items one and two, I would like to make a motion to allow the students to remain without waiving the tuition. For number three, I would like to make a motion...
Remain for how long in the...
One.
Students in one and two can remain as long as they so choose, the tuition will be paid.
No, they'll remain this year with no tuition and then tuition next year.
Oh, I see what I'm doing.
We're not giving tuition at all.
I apologize. May I please speak again?
Please start over, yes.
Yeah, because we're in the middle of the year.
Right.
I'm thinking it's the beginning of the year, I apologize. Julie, I'd like to change the motion to say one and two will remain for this year. Choosing to remain beyond that, they will be charged tuition.
That's not what we agreed to.
Okay, that's, yes it is. That's the motion for number one and two. Ms. Coats made the motion and Mr. Garrett seconded.
Do we want to vote on that one before we do the next one, or do I make the motion for number three, Madam Chair?
Let's do those two together.
Okay.
Is that a...
Question.
All right, while Julie's getting those together. Hold on a second. You guys, look, we have got to all stop the chitter-chatter. It's hard for people to hear. If you've got a question, raise your hand. So Reverend Collins has a question. Thank you.
So my concern with the motion is that we're binding them to tuition next year if they apply without knowing the circumstances. And then before, when next year comes, they can appear before a new board, they can decide whether tuition is applicable or not. But to do it today, it's binding the motion, so why would we deal with it now when we don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring?
I can explain why I brought the motion forward.
I know why you brought it, but we don't...
Because the board has voted that way for the last 26 requests.
But we don't need to deal with the future.
Reverend Collins, they can still bring it forward next year with whatever those circumstances are and the board could vote on it then.
But it has to be overturned, is what I'm trying to say. The decision has to be overturned, that second part of the motion has to be overturned.
Reverend Collins is correct that the motion binds future years until they bring it forward. But as we discussed when we asked the district to bring it back, that is how we unanimously voted for 26 other occasions since January 1st, so there's 26 that are bound through this.
Mr. Garrett?
I call the question.
All right, call the question, all right.
Right. We're going to, we're going to manually call for one and two.
Okay, I got it.
Have clarification?
Yes, clarification, Mr. Miller.
Cindy, in your motion, if the students remain out of county at the end of this year, the tuition then could be applied. If they happen to move back in county...
Then there's, then there's no, there's no longer an out-of-county request on the table.
Okay, so this is for 5A. We have a motion for one and two.
Yeah, I need to clarify it up.
So for motion for one and two to stay through the rest of this school year, even though they live out of county, next year if they continue to live out of county, they would pay tuition, they could come back and apply again for something different. Mr. Hollingshead, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Now, do we have a motion on the third, 5A, number three?
I make a motion that we honor the request as presented by the family.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Ms. Coats and a second from Reverend Mack to honor the request as it came from the family. Mr. Hollingshead, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. The next item is, um, the Health Advisory Committee vacancies. We need to, we have some applications, and we were going to make some, a motion with the appointments for those.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Okay.
Um, and it'll be multiple appointments.
Right.
There was only one student applying, so I make a motion that we approve that student.
Okay.
There was only one teacher. I make a motion that we approve that teacher for community, um, Borkman and Moses, and for medical, Cochran.
Second.
All right, so we have a, a motion from Ms. Coats and a second from Mr. Garrett. Does anybody have any questions about that? The Health Advisory Committee, are we continuing to vote this on paper, Julie, right now?
We can, uh, we can do that.
Okay, well, hold on one second, Julie will have that up for us. And we're going to keep, um, the, it open because we did not have any clergy to apply. So, um, go ahead and vote, please. So we'll keep it open to see if we get some more, um, clergy to apply, and they can bring it back to us.
There's no deadline to that, is there?
No, I mean, we'll always take it.
Yeah.
All right, so is everybody voted, Julie? So if you'll see, that's a unanimous vote, nine yea for.
I'm, I move to approve the three-year contract proposed in personnel.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Garrett and a second from Reverend Mack to approve the contract discussed in executive session. Um, are we going to do this up here, Julie? Okay? So it's Garrett and Reverend Mack, right? Okay, so please vote.
Serious typing going on there.
Let me see. Let me see.
Okay, has everybody voted? All right, so the motion is eight yes, one abstention. Reverend Collins abstained, the motion passes. Um, the next item on the agenda is visitors and public comments. Reverend Mack?
Madam Chair, we have two visitors with us today, Brooke Boris and Christian White. If you would please come at this time, uh.
Come right up here?
Yep.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Brooke Moseller-Boris, and I'm the chair of the Tri-County Human Trafficking Task Force. Um, in 2018, in January, the Attorney General's statewide human trafficking task force came out with their annual report that said 118 human trafficking cases occurred in South Carolina just in 2017. Um, not all of those were prosecuted. But Charleston County was the second highest location for trafficking in the state. Um, our task force began in March. 12 to 16, depending on the study, is the average age, the, um, average victim falls into trafficking. And truancy is one of the top indicators of, um, it's a high-risk factor of a trafficking child. Um, then in April, Governor McMaster signed, um, H-3701, which amended the definition of child abuse and neglect to include all forms of trafficking. I may be saying things you already know, so forgive me. Um, but of course, if the definitions change, then it affects all mandated reporters, all teachers, school personnel, to be able to identify and report on trafficking. And it changes the, um, comprehensive health education program to affect, um, sexual abuse curriculum. So our, um, our task force, we have the resources with community partners, of course, to, um, not only train teachers adequately and school personnel, but also provide different curricula that have been, uh, used around different states. Um, there's not one that's, um, and we're, we're in the midst of tailoring it to South Carolina. Greenville County is already doing that. So, um, any help, we've met with Fran Stilly and Clara Heinsohn, so they've been great. But any, any help or, um, uh, any help is appreciated, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for that update, that's helpful.
Uh, Christian White, yep.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in the Bell Hall Elementary School Zone, um, off of Long Point Road in Mount Pleasant. And recently, the Moultrie Middle School decision was made, um, by the District Two Constituent Board, um, which actually excluded Bell Hall from that plan, even though we were originally on all six of the original plans, based on traffic and logistics that, you know, took a long time, I, I believe, to come up with. But Bell Hall was ultimately removed from that plan, and now we face the Lucy Beckham High School zoning coming up. We're just concerned that possibly the same disregard for our particular students' safety and well-being is in jeopardy again. Uh, Long Point Road has an F rating by the DOT. Um, I've driven behind a school bus that actually had both right tires on the gravel where the road slopes down into the marsh on that two-lane part of Long Point Road. So we just feel like there's always been a safety issue with that road and buses. The current decision for the middle school zoning keeps our school traveling on that road on a daily basis versus the Moultrie decision would have had us on 526 East, which would just made more logical sense to me. But we're now concerned that Bell Hall isn't within walking and biking distance of the new Lucy Beckham High School. And because of that middle school zoning, it has also put our high school zoning in jeopardy, we firmly believe. Um, we're one of the few areas with this rare opportunity, and we know that the district values families that can walk and bike to school, and the value that that brings. Um, we just don't want to have our kids driving past or riding buses past the high school that is in our backyard to travel much further down. And we're just, we're asking for reassurance from not only the District Two Board, but maybe even from the constituent or the Board of Trustees, that the middle school zoning that was just decided is not going to affect high school zoning. Um, if so, then I feel like the Moultrie zoning needs to be redone, or you're going to have Bell Hall and Snalden in these neighborhoods that, again, we could be biking to school. That's not going to be an option for us anymore. And we're just hopeful that District Two will make at the high school zoning decision that will best serve the entire community. And if there's any advice that the Board of Trustees can offer in that, we would greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments for tonight.
Okay, thank you, and Board, if y'all remember, we?
Talking about that will.
Yep, we had, we've asked the D2 Board for some more information on that. Okay, so public comments is over, and the next items on our agenda, um, I think 7A and B, we included in, um, oops, 7A and B, we included in, um, the consent agenda. So that was GOF, Millet Sunset, and the early teacher recruitment. So the next item is 7C, which is adjustment to school board salaries. So, so do we have any, um? Do I have a motion, any discussion, or?
On which form?
This is on item 7C.
Oh.
7A and B, when we approved the agenda and the consent agenda items, 7A and B were moved to the consent agenda, so we approved those two. So now we're on item 7C.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this in our current budget?
Um, Mr. Candidate, yeah, oh, yeah, Todd could say.
Yep.
So where would the money come from, I guess, follow-up question.
Ask.
Uh, yeah, I mean, really, we would have to do, I mean, we would have to approve to add it to the moment. Where the money would probably come from, just as a default of lap salaries, that we've had, uh, we've got less lap salaries this year than we did last year, but there would be enough in lap salaries to cover this without raising taxes. Uh, and that's based on at least our past two years. Mr. Kennedy, call me if I'm wrong. Okay. And the total amount, I apologize, the total amount for this? What was, say, with? Was, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Now, I apologize, I had it when we did it in committee, and I've.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, you have your pencils that I made sure were still there, even though I knocked your computer down.
So the, uh, the total amount of salaries was, uh, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, um, plus the friends associated with that, another twenty-six thousand, a total of one hundred thirteen point five dollars. One hundred thirteen dollars.
What was that, sir?
One hundred thirteen thousand.
I'm not aware of the other, I need to have the stat, what was the other?
The French.
An accounting term, explain to him what French is.
So if we must pay, uh, payroll package.
Got you.
Okay, so did?
Is the motion coming out of Audit Finance?
Uh, it was, it, it comes for, it was two to two in the committee.
So it doesn't come from Audit and Finance with the recommendation, it just comes out of Audit and Finance?
Yep.
Question, when does it start?
It would start immediately after the election.
I mean, that's not, that's not what I meant to say, I'm sorry. I mean, it is what I meant to say, but it's not what I meant. Um, it'll start after we vote after the election. So is that the cycle that will continue because that's what these senators in the general bill stated? Or does it tie into our, our budget and then start in June?
No, it would, it would start immediately.
We'll have to vote every year on it, or instead of?
Where's Natalie, where's Natalie?
Hi, dear.
So let's let Natalie, the attorney, answer that question.
I think it's one time you have to vote to enact it.
Everything that has been said is correct. It would start immediately after the election, and it would only be a one-time vote until you voted to do something else.
I understand.
However, um, and Natalie, correct me if I'm wrong, it can't start until after the election, but we can decide when we want it to start, if our start date is after the election. In other words, you could make a motion to start this with the next fiscal school year. It says must not take effect until after the next regularly scheduled election for board members. It does not tell you that you can't, it doesn't give you a date that says it must take effect after the election.
So Nat?
I move that we make Cindy our new legal.
So Natalie, if, if, can you please comment on that? Could, could somebody make a motion for it to start July 1st of 2019 versus immediately after this election?
The way that the language is worded, yes.
Okay.
So I accept that position, Michael.
Got you.
Okay, do we have, does anybody have a motion? If not, we can move on to other things.
I move to approve.
Okay, so, uh, Mr.?
What are we approving?
Mr. Miller?
Kennedy just said it.
The, yeah, the motion as written.
The motion, the motion in, in our system is the motion is to adopt the provisions of Bill S-1160. So Mr. Miller has made that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and who's seconding?
I second it.
And Mr. Hollingshed seconded?
May I get a clarification, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Um, the, the law doesn't state the compensation rate.
It's start after the election.
The law doesn't state the compensation rate, it, it states a compensation max. Are, is your motion for the max, or is your motion for another amount?
I believe it said, uh, an amount up to eight hundred dollars per month. Mr. Kennedy, the, the amount that you cited, was that based on eight hundred per month or another figure?
It was based on the maximum that's allowed here, eight hundred dollars per month.
For board members and nine hundred for the chair?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay.
But Natalie, we don't have to make it that much, do we? Because we do get the?
That's what the motion is.
Yep, that's what the motion is.
I'm asking for a legal clarification, because we get the iPads, we get the phones, we get the computers.
So ask Natalie.
So I, I did, but everybody started laughing before she had to answer.
Natalie, can you answer Ms. Coats' question?
What's the question?
Can we set the rate if it's below the max?
Yes.
Can I have a question too? Can we, can Cindy be allowed to just hers to what she wanted to be?
All right, stop, no.
No, I'm serious. She's allowed to just hers to what she wanted to be, or individuals.
No.
She might want fifty dollars a month, or twenty-five dollars a month.
No, all right, so there's a motion, does anybody else have any real questions?
I'll second it.
All right, so there's a motion and a second, it's up on your screen to vote, please vote. Okay, so, um, there are three nay, three yays, six nays, um, so the motion fails.
Who the nays?
The nays are Darby, Staub's, Coats, Mack, mm, Jeffrey, Garrett, sorry, I need better eyes, eyeglasses. Jeffrey and Garrett. Okay?
I'd like to make another motion.
I can't see it.
Okay.
You read the nays, six nays, right?
Yes, they're right behind you. All right, Cindy has a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the board set their compensation at four hundred dollars a month effective with the next budget cycle, continuing the same policy with the phones and computers that we already have.
The phones are in November. Phones are in November, okay?
Okay, so, so Cindy has a motion that would have the compensation be four hundred dollars beginning with the new, the 1920 budget, is that what you said?
Aye.
Okay, beginning with the 1920 budget. So that would be next July, do I, we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right.
That has never happened.
It's about getting him some money he would second.
All right, do we have any other questions or discussion?
Cindy made the mention of the same policy as electronics or something?
Right, I'm saying that we set the, the, the financial compensation at four hundred and leave those policies intact. So you're still going to get a phone if you choose, you're still going to get a computer if you choose, you're still going to get an iPad if you choose, and you can also bill the district for your office supplies if you choose. That's the policy we passed earlier this year. You, board members don't do it, but their policy is on the books that allows them to.
That's a question.
All right, Reverend Collins?
I don't quite understand what you, I know the policy you're speaking about, but how does it pertain to the state office?
She's just saying it stays the same, it doesn't, nothing changes.
Absolutely saying it.
That's not even the table, I mean, though.
Well, she put it in the.
I'm absolutely saying it's not on the table.
Right, she just put it in the motion. So the motion is, which you seconded, that the board pay the four hundred dollars starting in July 2019, and that our technology policy stays the same.
Well, I want to withdraw the second, the second part of the motion I agree with, but the first part I do with.
Okay.
Let there be a second, a second motion for that.
All right, so you're.
But the first part I'll, I'll.
So he withdraws his second, so is there a second to my motion?
So, we're drawing.
Technology, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, so we have a, a motion from Ms. Coats, do we have a second from anybody else?
The motion fails for lack of a second.
All right, the motion fails, all right? All right.
You can take that off the screen.
We can take that off, Julie, because Reverend Collins, um, okay, Reverend, okay? All right, so, all right.
And if it helps, there's nothing else to vote on.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry?
Question?
Yep.
Natalie?
Oh, Natalie.
We don't approve this tonight or anything, so it won't be two years till we can take it up again, right?
Right.
That is true.
Before the election, we have to do that by election.
Mm-hmm, so the legislative effort just goes in vain then, what we're playing around with tonight?
Yeah.
This coming from the people that wouldn't second a motion.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion that we go with the, uh, legislative recommendation of a max of eight hundred and nine hundred and for it to begin January 1st.
All right, hold on, go with the legislative recommendation of eight hundred and nine hundred, and that it go into effect?
January 1st, 2019?
Yes.
It's coming during the?
Effect, January 1st, 2019, okay? So do we have a second for that motion? Sorry, Julie.
That's okay.
Do you have a second for Kevin's motion, the eight hundred and nine hundred going into effect January 1st, 2019?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Miller seconds. Do we have any discussion or questions on that motion? Okay, let's give Julie a second. All right, so that motion by Kevin, the second by, um, Mr. Miller, and please vote. Okay, has everybody voted? Julie, are you waiting on anybody?
I mean, I'm not anymore.
Okay? Okay, so the motion is three yeses, six nays, the motion fails. The nays are Darby, Staub's, Coats, Mack, Jeffrey and Garrett, and the yays are Collins, Hollingshed and Miller.
So let the nays make a motion then? Let the nays make their motion?
I don't think that, I think they've done that.
Nays didn't make a motion.
Wait a minute, it's just dead, the legislative body got one to all this trouble to override the government.
Chris, what's your motion, Chris?
They must say it.
Let me let you ride.
All right, hold on, Ke- Kevin has the floor.
The legislators override the government's veto to give us the privilege to do what we have to do today. So we can't all agree to that and it just dies and leave it alone. And let the legislators know that we failed what I do.
Okay, all right, so the.
I'll let them know that we decided to wait until 2020 when a full election cycle passed. I don't consider that a failure.
All right, let, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
I'm not happy enough, I'd like to talk about student achievement.
Yay!
We had, um, two reports in your packet tonight, the first, uh, I'm not going to talk about tonight, but it is an important report. If you haven't had time to read it, um, I doubt you'll find time to read it. So we'll review the high points of evaluating the relationship between poverty and school performance um, at our November Committee of the Whole Meeting. We want to talk about data, thank you, thank you, Andy, in terms of using it to help us serve students better, not using it to punish or embarrass people. And that often happens with accountability systems. Despite the best intents of those who started to build the systems, we often end up using the data in ways that fail to honor the hard work that teachers do when they serve schools full of impoverished children. The only way that we'll ever acknowledge the work that's occurring and look at what is working and scale it is to measure growth. I want to start by sharing with you tonight just a few of the slides from the presentation that's on the screen. Reverend Collins? Did you have a comment?
No, there's nothing. I was smiling at something, but nothing to do with you. Yeah, nothing to do with you.
And Erica, if anybody else in the audience wants a copy of your four excerpts, this is a presentation that Dr. Lauren Anderson gave to the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee. Dr. Anderson is probably, um, one of the most well-regarded researchers in the country. He happens to reside here in South Carolina. And again, I'm not going to cover all of my slides, I just want to mention a few. The first slide, he says, "The data I will be presenting are not longitudinal data." Longitudinal data, we're representing the same students over time. We don't do that here in Charleston and we should. We should bring back to you every year the longitudinal data. How did last year's 4th graders do this year on 5th grade? In 5th grade, we don't do that. We tell you how last year's 4th graders did compared to this year's 4th graders. Those are two different groups of students. We should start looking at the same group of students over time. The second thing I'm going to point out is his third bullet, he says, um, he doesn't, he, he's picked out the odd number of years because that's when the National Assessment of Education Progress is, is given. And that's what he's trying to show here. So I'm just going to click to this slide. This is, uh, the percent of 4th grade students who meet standards on South Carolina's tests from 2000 to, to, to 2017. And if you look at these data, it looks as though our children were doing really well until 2013 and then something happened and the bottom fell out. But what happened was, we, we changed tests in South Carolina, we changed three times over those years. The first test that we were using was a South Carolina, um, made-up test. Then we moved to ACT that doesn't show up on this chart. Then we went to a new, a different South Carolina made-up test.
Is she ready?
So, but this is what I want us to be careful about when we compare test scores over years because the tests have changed and the cut scores are set differently and the tests aren't reliable. The next slide shows the same sort of downward trend with 8th graders.
Dr. Postaway, I'm sorry to interrupt, but these are South Carolina, not CCSD.
These are South Carolina, but CCSDs.
We're in the trend, yes.
Every districts will follow the, this same sort of trend. Then, um, he simply reviewed some of the tests we've had from 1999 to 2017. And in his remarks, he, he talked about that the reason, he doesn't understand why we keep changing tests. But this is a slide I want us to look at for just a moment. He shows, um, what the adjusted scores would look like if you use scaled scores.
For tennis schools?
Scaled. And then he, he, I'm, I'm going to skip to this slide, which is the really interesting slide. The orange dots represent the, the state, South Carolina student scores on the National Assessment of Educational Progress. The problem with the National Assessment of Educational Progress is it is a test given to a random sample of students. One of the things we might consider doing, if we, if we could do it and get out of administering the state tests, would be to give the National Assessment of Educational Progress to all of our students. You can do that, but we would have to have special permission to do that. But you see the stability, it's, it's unfortunate that it's stable, it should be increasing. But you see the stability of, of the orange, those are the national tests versus the South Carolina tests. We see that, um, in 4th grade and in 8th grade. So, but those are the main points I want to make tonight. We have to be really careful when we start comparing data over time using South Carolina tests. The tests that are, are much more valid and reliable would be tests like the ACT, like the SAT. Those results will be released next week and we can get a real sense of whether we're making progress or not when we look at those kinds of results. So that, that, those are the only points I wanted to make from tonight's slides. This shows us over time, if you look at South Carolina tests in grade 4 and in, and the NAEP tests in grade 4, we've, the state has gone up a bit, um, over time with our 4th graders. There's no significant difference in terms of where those dots are. But the point that Dr. Anderson was making to the EOC is this. We're spending a lot of money and time on testing and we're getting ready to issue report cards to schools. Those report cards are based on tests that are neither valid nor reliable. So what we want to talk with the board about this year is looking at growth measures and finding some way, um, our incredible researchers have created for every single school, the growth of students in every single grade, in the grades that were tested on, using MAP, looking at the bottom 20% of the students, the, the students from the 20th to the 40th percentile, 40 to 60, 60 to 80 and 80 to 100. Why is that important? If your child was scoring at the, at, in the bottom fifth of all the students in the country, and I'm gonna wait just a minute because I am a teacher. I'm a waiter. This is important to me and to you and to kids and to teachers and to parents in the community. Thank you. If your child was scoring in the bottom fifth at the beginning of the year on MAP, MAP test compared that child's growth with all the other thousands of children in the country who were scoring at the same place, we need to get this point right this year. I didn't explain it well a couple of years ago. Things got so contorted that I didn't try to explain what I was trying to explain. I let it go. But it is critical for us to get this right, get our arms around it and start looking at it for every single person whose responsibility it is to serve children in this district. That's me, that's most of the people sitting in this audience who are employed by the district, it's all of the principals and assistant principals and those who support teachers and the teachers. So it gives us the chance to see in every single school in the district how we were able in that school to grow students in the bottom 20th percentile compared to all the rest of the country in the bottom 20. The same thing with the top 20. So for every single school, you can see which schools are getting growth with, with which kids and which schools aren't getting growth for any kids. That begins to give us a starting place to think about equity, to think about resources and coaching. And I want to say this very clearly, not to think about firing anybody. That was never the intent. And I want to get it clear, get it straight and get it done. Because you cannot improve outcomes for children of color and poverty unless you focus on growth and begin to grow them academically. You will never close gaps without growth. If we could focus on only one metric in this district, it would be the amount of growth that is occurring. And as soon as we get children through the 8th grade or 9th grade, if we can still test 9th graders, if they, they don't test out of the, of the top, um, range on MAP. And then in the high school, count the numbers of kids who are able to graduate, be graduated from school and go to the military because they've scored 31 or higher on ASVAB and haven't been arrested. Those who have gotten a career credential and could go into a job with a living wage. Those who can go to Trident Tech without having to take remedial coursework and those who could want to a four-year college. If we hold ourselves and every single person in this district accountable for those metrics, ladies and gentlemen, we can make a difference. But we have to get serious about this and only this. So for the rest of my time with you on this board, that is what I'm going to be talking about. When you come in for Committee of the Whole in November, you, we're going to give you for every single school those quintile reports. Principals received them this past week and we're going to be talking with quizzles about the kind of growth we need to see. We talked a bit tonight about three-year contracts for people. Those contracts should be contingent among the ability to show growth. Growth for students who sit below the 40th percentile ought to count more than growth for anybody else. They already counts, uh, in their accountability system, they weigh more the growth of a student sitting in the bottom 20th percentile. So the accountability system overall in South Carolina isn't fair when it slaps grades on school because it doesn't account enough for the, the, the levels that children were when they came to us. So I want us to be, report cards will come out next month and I want us to be very careful about what we say about our teachers and principals who serve our children who, who are most vulnerable and who count on public schools to get it right for them. So that's the superintendent's report for tonight. And I, I, I hope we can all stick together on this point moving forward.
I'm sure we have a couple of questions, Cindy and then Mr. Miller.
Um, Dr. Postaway, to clarify, did, uh, when initially there was a requirement that a percentage of schools fall in the highest and the lowest grades regardless, like every district had to have X percent that would be at the lowest grade. I know that was debated much, did it come into the final version?
Yes.
So even if all of our schools were performing the same, per state law, some school is going to have to be rated lower because a percentage of our schools have to be rated, I think it's a D and then only a max percent can be rated an A or something. And we need to be aware of that, that's arbitrary.
Like they, they didn't put letter grades on it, but, but for example, here's an outlandish example. If all of our students matriculated to Harvard, uh, we would still have schools rated as needing improvement because if they're, they score them on a bell curve. Conversely, if none of our schools graduated students.
Somebody's still going to man on the side of the bell curve.
Some would be higher scored, higher performing than others. And that's true at, at statewide, they do those averages. There will always be, uh, the bottom 10% will always be found in that lowest rated category. But that's, we just need to understand those things. What we need to focus on is growth and rewarding growth where it occurs. Finding what people are doing and scaling it, rewarding it where it occurs and coaching where it does not.
Mr. Miller?
I agree, I do agree that there ought to be a, a more of a deliberate focus on identifying growth in our students. But you didn't mention, I know I stepped out there for a second, about proficiency. So are we still, are, is our focus solely on growth and very little on proficiency? Because we are so far, in some of our schools, our children are so far below where they need to be. I agree with you, if the growth doesn't take place, the gap never closes. And you can't meet proficient until you close, there's a saying I have, if you can't keep up, you can't catch up. So are we abandoning the proficiency, um, measurement for now? And putting more of our focus on growth or how we, how are we approaching that?
We would never abandon proficient, proficient is the destination. So what we have is a system where we're trying to get kids to proficiency, but the system is designed around time. So what I would say to you is, we always have to look at both measures, but we have to stop punishing our children who cannot yet run a 10-minute mile.
Right.
Because they didn't run it in 10 minutes.
Right.
The only way to get toward, let's, let's do something more appropriate for us, walking a 15-minute mile.
Okay, right.
We, we can't give up on that goal, that's the goal. If that's what it takes to get an interview at Boeing, we also are going to have to, we have to be able to reach that goal.
Right.
But we can't, we can't say schools are failing when they got more growth than another school who started with children who are closer to the goal. So it's always looking at both, but right now, given where our system is, we must, we must know how to grow. We're not going to make the destination if we don't grow. And we're focusing on the, we're talking a lot about the destination. We've got to look at, get under the hood, what's happening?
Right.
Where are we getting the growth and where are we not? Because we will not go if we do not grow.
Right.
So we would never abandon the destination. Because that's the, that's the North Star. But we, we have to accelerate the pace at which some students are getting there and understand that we're going to have to put additional resources. And I am not talking about more money necessarily. I do not think it is wise to simply fork over more money.
Right.
Without knowing precisely what to do. So that's where we get into this balance between how much autonomy.
Yeah.
Right? And how mu- how many resources of what type.
I, I agree with you, I think, you know, I, I look at, you know, the, the numbers because I monitor my daughter's, you know, performance and data like a mad scientist. And so I'm constantly with her teacher, you know, asking about, you know, what more can she do? She's, because when you started to talk about from the 0 to 20 and the 20 to 40 percentile, I started thinking about my own child and where she is. And I think you're right, I, I know proficiency is the mark, it's, it's where we need to go. That's our destination. We can't get there without the growth. And so for me, when you mentioned equity, it, to me, what rang in my mind was, um, something, we used the term, but I kind of rephrased it, when, when we talk about individualized learning. Because that's what that is.
It is.
When you identify every single child in our system at every single school and every single classroom and you see where they are when they come in to my classroom if I'm a teacher and where they progress throughout the year, throughout the quarter, throughout the end of the year, how do we then provide the right resources, not just finances? But how do we provide or what resources do we provide to look under the hood to see what's going on? How are we delivering education to that child? What are their needs and desires? Are we meeting those academic needs and desires and what that looks like? It doesn't look that way for every single child, obviously. And so I think it, it really becomes probably difficult to identify a classroom of children who are all over the gambit and the, and the teacher's like, okay, I got to move Priscilla, I got to move Michael, I got to move Chris and Eric. And how do they do that in a way that's not, um, they're not tearing their hair out at the end of the day, but they're so supportive and know what the mission is? Because I think, there's one good thing about, um, the parent meetings that we're having across the district on Friday, is that not enough parents understand this. They have no idea that this even exists.
That's what the dashboard's for.
And so when you mentioned about a school that might be low performing, because I don't use the term failing when it comes to our schools, when you mentioned a school that may be low performing, a parent doesn't know the kind of growth that might be taking place inside that building.
Right.
They look at an overall school card that doesn't measure the growth. And so that's unfair not only to the children, it's unfair to the teachers and to the principal of that school for the work that they are doing, so.
And that's exactly what's going to happen next month.
Right. And so I'm looking forward to, obviously, more and more conversations about growth and where we are and making sure that children are prepared for the next grade level because it's unfortunate that so many children are going to the next grade not prepared.
That's right.
To do that work and then teachers get named and the system get named and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's, I'm looking forward to it.
Is there any chance, I mean, that, that, that the state will get away from, you know, the state-only tests so that we could do something like this statewide instead of the S.A.R.D.?
I noticed that both of the guberns, I don't know how many gubernatorial candidates there are.
Two.
Right, yeah.
But the two that I watched in the debates both indicated that they would support less testing. And, and I would hope that over time, people are realizing that for the past 20 years, we've tried this particular accountability model and it has not. we've tried this particular accountability model, and it has not worked the needle much.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm really hoping that people will, will come to terms with the fact that if we look at, if we look at growth, I mean, a parent who has a child scoring between the 80th and 100th percentile has, has, has reason to expect, does as much reason to expect growth as any other parent.
Right.
So, growth is something that's fair to everyone, and it's also really helpful to, to us in terms of understanding our mission
Right.
is to make sure every student who leaves us can step productively into something post-secondary.
Mr. Garrett?
Just a question. Has this been, with all the principals here today, at the start of the year, has this been communicated down to the teacher level?
No, sir. Um, the staff met with, we only got the quintile research done
So, this is going forward now?
In the last couple of weeks.
Okay. So, there was no doubt to act on?
It went to principals last week.
Okay.
And, and I just asked today, the November principals' meeting will be about this. And then teachers need to be involved in helping to build what this will look like. And that's the mistake I made two years ago when I came. Charleston County had used MAP tests, given MAP tests for a long time, but, and probably at one time, there, there, there was a whole core of teachers who used the data, but, but I think over time, we've had turnover. Mr. Miller, I'll not forget, you asked the question, "Do our people know how to use these data?" And I said yes, but I was wrong about that.
No, they did not.
I was wrong.
Yeah.
And we, 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 we lost that, um, culture. So, we are starting, and I hope that what we will build by the end of this year is, is an understanding and support for operating this way, so that some people won't, honestly, from my point of view, take advantage of, of some comments to run an agenda that was unfair and unfounded to start with.
So, can we make Mr. Hollenshed?
I'm kind of a brick and mortar person. Um, give me an example. You said more resources in my district, I hate to say it like Shakora mentioned. Will you look at things like more content hours or reading in math? Will you look at providing resources in that area? Are you looking at wraparound programs?
Wraparound, small
Things, things like that, or trying to engage City of North Charleston into the equation to extend hours? What, I mean, help me understand where you want to go with this.
So, I would say we would, we want to start with evidence-based practice. So, what do we know about what use of resources produces outsized results? Because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about outliers.
Mm-hmm.
Places that get results beyond average. And we know that that involves, in whatever ways the design is, is put together, it can't be top-down, and it involves time, it involves talent, and some, some of that takes money.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I don't know what form it will take, Mr. Hollenshed. It, it would mean extra coaching from the district. It means making sure that people who are involved in the decisions that are made at the school level have expertise. And I honestly hadn't thought about involving the City of North Charleston, but clearly, it, it is going to take a lot of extra support outside schools. Schools cannot do it all.
No.
But to your point, I think we have, and I think that was pointed out today, one of our areas of improvement is to engage the community resources that are there more intentionally than we currently do, so.
But you'll have a blueprint for us to look at in a given time?
So, we're, we're starting the conversation today. What I would envision is, over the next two or three months, the principals and their leadership teams will put plans together. And what I would like to see is at the committee of the whole meetings, rather than having three or four principals come and present to you, I would envision a team of principals often share a common problem. Like, here's, here's what we found. We found we were teaching to this segment of students, but not to this segment. Working together with our teacher leaders and our school improvement council, these are the recommendations we're making for, for using resources differently, because it's not always about getting more resources, it's about using differently some of the resources we currently have.
Look, help me understand something. I, I, I got to visit, again, I'm just using as an example CDA, and what they do there with a smaller group, but they have a sampling of the children that we're dealing with at, at large in the district, and they're making it work. Help me understand, as, as you're the professional, what are they doing there that we need to mimic across the county?
Uh, I would say this about CDA's.
I'm just, I'm asking.
I'll, I'll say two things. They have incredibly strong leadership
Mm-hmm.
and, and a group of supporters who, from the outset, were really clear about their mission. And they have implemented with fidelity everything they started out to do, and every single person in that school can tell you exactly what they are doing and why.
Got you.
It's tied back to this charter. You would know a lot better than I.
Yeah.
But those are the two things I would imagine.
You know, my daughter goes to the school, and so, I tell people all the time, her four-year-old class, or 25, 26, 27 kids in her four-year-old program class. Um, a little background, maybe two or three of those children came from, had parents who were married. Eighty, ninety percent of the kids were considered Title I students. But her, her pri-, they had three teachers in her, in her classes. Her primary teacher, Ms. Lemon, who's a former teacher of the year, had 30-plus years' experience. The secondary teacher was Ms., I can't remember her name, Ms. Lemon, not Ms. Lemon, Ms. Blackwell, I believe it was, Ms. Backman. She was also an educator with 25-plus years' experience. And then the third teacher in the classroom was a Citadel grad student who was working on her master's degree. And then coupled in there throughout the day, you know, throughout the month, were additional people coming into the class, providing additional support, like other mentors and other teacher support. So, Michael received, in her first year of schooling, close to 70-plus years of academic experience in teaching
Mm-hmm.
in her first year of school.
I think the thing that you have to step back one more is, they have universal four-year-old kindergarten. South Carolina doesn't fund universal four-year-old kindergarten.
Right.
Every student who's in the first grade at CDA
Right.
has been in school for two years.
Yeah.
And the state of South Carolina does not consider a kid a student until they're five.
And some kids in her kindergarten class didn't go to CDA, their, their, their four-year year, so they came into the, into the building. But Dr. um, Dr. Postaway is right when she talks about, there is a culture of intent where excuses just cannot take place.
I think that's the value of the
I'm a pa-, I'm a parent, and I have super-high expectations, not just for my daughter's performance, but for what the school should be delivering to her in the classroom every single day. And I think they understand that, and I'd be the first one to tell you, if they don't have a large PTA, if they have one at all, they have a very small school improvement council with maybe less than seven parents, it is not a school where the parents are, are, are in the building every single day. That doesn't happen.
Mm-hmm.
But the parents who send the children to that school have the faith that, when they come here, this school is gonna do and meet the needs of my child. And if they don't, I will come in and other parents will come in, and that's why those, those, those meetings next week
That's right.
makes so much sense, because even when I talk to Dr. Johnson and some of the other educators in the building, are you talking about where the child is when it comes to MAP? Have you mentioned the, the growth to the parents? Because even though parents, because they got school choice, you can select the school you want to send your child to, that does not mean that the parents are educated on what this stuff means to us, or to the teacher, or to their child. They just don't know. If my kid, they'll say, my kids make it As and Bs, but that's good, right? Well, are they growing? Are they proficient? Most parents don't know that. So, that school does that, even if the parents are not aware.
It's like Mitchell Downtown. Dr. Postaway, is this the
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Hollenshed was finishing up.
So, in closing, step, just step back on what you just said, or said you said a minute ago, in Shakora. Um, if we can't create a four-year program, who could we partner or build with to create a program in that area that does a feeder into the school
Charleston Promise Year.
that helps improve that area?
It's a CPN school, and it's got Matt and I.
It's a great question. I mean, I, I think that's one of, one of the questions we ought to be asking. I don't have an answer for you this evening.
Well, I'm just giving you something to think about.
Right.
And that, because, I mean, we can't, I think you said it recently, even when Minus Street Academy came here, we can't mimic everything that Minus Street does because of the resource they put into it. But we can come up with other conventional ways of making it happen with other resources. So, that's, that's all I'm asking you to think about and come back if you would.
That, that's exactly the spirit that we, that if all of us bring that spirit to this work
Mm-hmm.
we can get this done.
Dr. Postaway, is this the second year of the dashboards or the third year?
The third.
The third year.
The third year.
We, we piloted the first year.
And so, last year, every parent has seen this, so in theory, they're coming back to see the second.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Postaway? Any, and then we have the finance report that was in our packet. Does anybody
That we can read.
Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move.
All in favor? All right, meeting adjourned.
Despite five key things they need to work on, why did they get that initial approval?
Because we saw enough effective practices throughout the district to warrant that we believe that, given those five areas, they can address them effectively and move forward and improve the system.
You talked a lot about going into the future. What about the past as well? Because even in the previous year, there were several schools that were put on probation, and, you know, they didn't receive recommendation then, too. Was that part of the thought process here?
Yeah, because we're, we're looking at the district as a whole, not the individual schools. We recognize there are struggling schools in this district. There are also high-performing district, uh, high-performing schools in the district. We believe that the district has the capability to improve those schools if they commit to the areas that we noted.
Can you go over those areas that you did note, those five key areas?
The first and foremost is board governance, that the board needs training as a whole board. They need to understand their role and responsibilities to each other in to governing the district effectively. Uh, the second area was the culture of the classroom, really to provide a classroom for today and tomorrow's learning that's active, that's engaging, that uses available technologies to guide and support learning. Another area is alignment. The district's gone through a tremendous amount of change in a very condensed period of time to align the curricula K through 12, also across grade levels, to align teaching practices throughout, as far as leadership programs as well. Another area is allocation of resources. Today, there's a great disparity in the available resources. The high-performing schools have more resources to meet the needs of students than the low-performing schools. The district needs to engage a different budgeting process to ensure the allocation of resources is aligned with student needs. And the fourth area, or fifth area, what did I have? Alignment.
Allocation.
Allocation.
Community involvement.
Community engagement, that's right. Uh, the district engaged the community in establishing a strategic plan. They went through that process, but now, uh, the community needs to be engaged to enact the plan, to take the actions necessary. And the district needs to do further outreach to make sure the community understands the plan, what role they play in the plan, and how they can help support its achievement.
What are some things that Miami-Dade and Jefferson County, Kentucky did effectively to get improvement?
I think in both, both cases, they began with, uh, dealing with their differences that exist at the top of the system, between and among board members, with the leadership, not only the leadership of the superintendent, but as in case of Miami-Dade, the leadership throughout the community. They brought in business leaders, key political leaders, to all gather and come together as to what type of school system do they want for the future of Miami. They did that in Jefferson County. It's not, the, schools are not just the property of those who work in them. They are for the community. They serve the community, and it really is a community endeavor that helps them improve. So, they, they started there. The second thing is, they looked at how the community is going to use its resources and direct them to support schools. They got the buy-in from the community to increase resources where needed. And the community made that investment and seized education as an investment to ensure the economic prosperity of the community in which they live, as well as the employability of students who come out of the system.
You repeatedly said that the district needs work. How long will they have to do the work?
The areas that we've noted are not going to be fixed overnight. They're gonna take three, four years, and we want to see progress over those three or four years. We want to see evidence that the steps they're taking are having a positive influence on the results they're realizing.
What are the consequences for not getting these in, in line?
Achieving initial accreditation gets you over a threshold. Maintaining it is more challenging. So, accreditation now becomes a lever. If they want to maintain it, they must meet these expectations and make the improvements.
Dr. Hargreaves, I know you said in there that it's, it's improving down the road is, is more important, but how significant of an accomplishment is this for a district to become accredited across, across its entire scope initially?
It is very, it's very significant. As, as I noted, it's taken this district nearly three years to ready for this day, to achieve accreditation. Uh, they went through an enormous amount of work to get ready for an evaluation.